Hey, what's up guys? It's waiting for some people to get in here. So, West LA. Cowboys Nation, what's up? Wicked Twin. What's up guys? Hey Regina, how you guys doing? Alright, so... What's up, stunt man? Okay guys, so I'm here in the city of Atwater, California. And there was a lot going on. Hey, California Transparency. So, there was a cancel meeting and there's a lot going on, so I figured I'll just do this one live. I'm at the back gate right now. Hey Lindsay. Yeah, I'm at the back gate getting some dirty looks. Off duty officers. Uh oh, here we go again. I didn't even get started, guys. I just got here. California Guardian, what's up buddy? Yeah, I just got here. This is the city of Atwater. I'm like an hour away from Fresno kinda. Um, yeah, I just got here and there's a city council going on. There are a lot of people, the city officials are here. And, um, yeah, I was by myself. I figured I'll do this one live, so you guys can see what's going on here. Yeah, these two gentlemen right now, they got out. They're off duty officers, but they just pulled up right there sitting, so... Yes, this is the back gate. And that's the city hall and the police station, they're all next to each other. I'm gonna go in there in a minute. But it looks like these guys are tripping right now. See, there's some benches here for people to sit on, so if this place is open to public, it's like a park right here. I don't mind guys, I enjoy you guys just being with me in the chat. I don't know why these guys are tripping. You're sorry? For what? Isn't this open to public?
No, it's not.
Where does it say that?
This is the back part of the police department. This is not a public area, okay? These are private police vehicles and you are videotaping-
We're live, by the way.
Personal- that's fine. You are videotaping personal vehicles of employees of the police department coming and going and capturing the license plates down on there.
Okay, that doesn't mean anything, sir.
You cannot do that.
It's my First Amendment right to take pictures in public.
And it's an evasion of my right to privacy-
Sir, there is no expectation of privacy in public. You should know the law, sir. Aren't you a police officer?
Why are you back here and for what purpose?
I'm exercising my right.
Who are you?
I'm press. There's a council meeting going on.
Where is your press credential?
My First Amendment right, give me the rights to freaking-
Well, this is not an area that's open to the public first of all.
Isn't this a public road right here?
No, it's not a public road. This is a driveway into a police department parking lot that was fenced in for police vehicles. Look, you got my face on video, you don't need to-
We're live, it's not even recording, it's live.
But I do not want you back here videotaping personnel coming and going in their private vehicles with their license plates. I don't know what you're gonna do with that information, but it's usually never a good thing, okay? So, there's no purpose for you to be back here. Do you see anybody else back here?
Okay.
Do you see anybody else in public congregating back here?
Alright, do you understand that everything that you see here is purchased by taxpayers?
I understand.
We have every right to know what you do and how you spend our money.
You can walk into my locker room in the police department-
Not a locker room. If it's not accessible to public, I cannot be there, I give you that.
Yes.
But this is open to public. This is a park, isn't it a park?
No.
This is not a park?
This is not a park right here.
This is not a park?
For city vehicles and the employees.
Where does it say that? Where the line starts, where does it finish?
Do I need to tell you to breathe bud? Come on.
Sir, I know my rights.
You know to inhale and exhale, right? Nobody has to tell you that when you wake up in the morning, right?
I know my rights, sir. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So, what is the purpose of you coming back here-
I'm doing a story, I'm doing a story.
Other than to create, you know, controversy?
There is no controversy, sir.
What is your story about? The private lives of city employees? We have rights to privacy too bud. And I do not appreciate you videotaping me coming in and out of the police department in my personal vehicle. You have no right to that.
I don't have any rights.
So, if you wanna go up to the front, where the city council is in session, and speak with people up there and video people, you know, in a public forum, you may do that.
I was already there.
But this is not an area that is open to the public.
So, where does a park end? Can you explain that to me? This is a public park. There's benches right there.
Do you see any picnic tables here?
No, I see benches right there, alright?
Or for the city. For city employees to take breaks on.
Okay, so where does the trespass sign?
Right, it's- I'm not talking about trespassing.
If there's no trespass-
If you were over there, that's different, but you're not. You're walking around these private vehicles, okay? Personal vehicles.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
An area that is not common to the public.
Common, but it's open to public.
Do you see the signs of- do you see the signs-
Sir, you need to obey the law. I'm not trying to be a jerk, man.
You asked me about signs. There are signs right there that says-
This guy keep pointing at people and telling them to go inside.
Do not enter.
Where? Where does it say that?
Walk right up there and put your camera up at the vehicle.
I will, I will. Is that a trespass sign or is this unauthorized vehicle? Cause I'm not a vehicle. I'm a person.
Okay, go look at it. It's the same difference, bud. We can argue minutia all we want.
There is no difference, sir. I know the law.
We can argue minutia with it all we want.
Okay.
But I'm telling you, you're not gonna stand back there and-
So, you're telling me I'm trespassing or no?
Put your camera over a fence, which means stay out. That's why we put fences-
Am I trespassing or am I not?
Yeah.
Where? Where am I trespassing? Where?
I just told you.
Dude, I'm standing on grass in the park!
I just told you bud.
Alright. Can I get your name and badge number?
And take license plate photos and vehicles and-
What can I do with a license plate? If only- like what?
I'm not gonna get into a battle of semantics with you bud.
Oh my god, bro. I know the law better than you, sir.
I'm asking you nicely to return to a public area.
Am I trespassing?
If you wanna stand over there on the grass-
Am I trespassing?
If you want to stand over there on the grass, in the park area, that's fine. But you're not gonna stand back there by the back gate-
You cannot enforce your will, sir.
You're not gonna stand by the back gate and videotape police officers-
I can do it from the front. I do this all the time, sir. I'm a journalist. I gather content for stories.
What paper do you work for? Who do you write for?
Have you heard of the 2010 memo? You're not even letting me talk!
Cause I haven't heard of it. You have no press credentials.
I don't need- it's called the First Amendment of the Constitution, which you took an oath to protect, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay then, what's the problem?
Okay.
If you have taken an oath, if you're an oath keeper, you would know what I'm talking about. And this guy for pushing people out. I mean, what do you think I'm doing? It's just a camera, man. I have no ill intent.
I just- I just-
I'm exercising my right, that's it, sir.
Why you can't be out here bud?
I'm just exercising my right, sir. You're telling me I can't do that?
That's not a right. I don't come up to your house-
Freedom of press, freedom of religion and freedom of speech, sir.
In your car and what's going on in your backyard, okay?
This is not your house, this is not your backyard. This is my property, because I pay for it and these people who are watching-
I'm giving you examples-
They're the one who paid for your crap.
Okay?
Okay? Wherever you're coming from, as long as I'm not breaking the law, you have no authority, sir. I'm in public property. Thank you, sir. Thank you. He just said he's in public property. You guys are gonna be famous, man. There is nothing I can do with your license plate. Your license plate is meant to be for public information. That's why, it's right there. It doesn't matter where you go, everybody can see it. Sir, you're a police officer, you should know the law better, sir. This is why I do what I'm doing. To educate people like you, man. How can you call yourself a police officer? What law are you enforcing right now? Accept your will, man. You're trying to impose your will. Yes, sir, that's what I said.
What are you working for?
I work for myself.
Do you have pre-lapse care?
Yes, sir.
Do you have credentials?
Do I need credentials? It's called the First Amendment of the Constitution, sir. And you took an oath to protect, so did you, so did you. But you're here imposing your will instead of fucking imposing the law. That's wrong, sir. That's wrong.
We can disagree, but you're enforcing a lawful-
You're not enforcing any law. Tell me what law I'm breaking.
I didn't use any profanity. You don't need to use profanity, bud.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. What law am I breaking, sir?
I've explained it to you, okay?
You didn't explain nothing. You didn't say what law I'm breaking. Have you heard of 148. G? Have you heard of 148. G?
You have been advised that-
Penal code, penal code 148. G, look it up. God, it's like dealing with dumb people, man. This officer in uniform, he just told, informed these two other officers that I'm in public and I have every right to record. How you doing, sir? Good, thank you, man. He at least knows the law. China imposes will on me, man. Good thing I went live, guys. And this guy keep pointing at people shooting them inside for no reason. Go back in, go back in. Camera terrorists. Come on, man.
We're gonna have the city manager talk to you, bud, if you wanna do a story.
Excuse me? Who are you? Who are you? What's your name and badge number? Nobody. Thank you. Shit. And this guy even identified himself, like who is he, man? I'm gonna go notify the city, guys. Cause I'm in public taking pictures. Look at it. They're laughing. Guys, I'm in Atwater, California. There is a city council meeting going on. And these guys are tripping out. See, Officer Robinson looks like he knows the law.
How you doing, sir?
Good, sir. How you doing? I'm just trying to exercise my right freely, sir. We still live in America, correct? This is not North Korea, right? You wanna live in North Korea, you're more than welcome to go, okay? But you're not gonna impose your will on me because I'm exercising my First Amendment, God-given right. God-given, not government. Front porch, is this your house? I pay for this shit. I thought you were cool, man. You starting to run your mouth too. Alright. No, man. This is not your house. First of all, second one, if you do- As long as you're not breaking the- as long as you're not breaking the law, you're more than welcome to. Go ahead. You guys heard that, right? You're live, by the way. I'm not trying to offend you. I have nothing against police officers, sir. It shouldn't be. Okay, you know what, let me tell you something. I spoke to Modesto PD one time, okay? There is a detective guy named Mike. You can look him up, okay? This is what he exactly told me. He's like, "When you guys record us, okay, it should not bother us. We should not engage you. If anything, it should make us look more professional." Do you think this behavior makes you, makes your department look professional? Asking you. You think this behavior, this, the way you're acting makes your department look professional? I don't care what you advise me, man. I'm a man, I'm a grown ass man.
See bud, that's- you just hit the nail on the head. You don't care.
I wanna exercise my right. Another man is not gonna walk up to me in public and tell me what I should-
By being back here and videotaping personal vehicles, you know, of police officers.
It's my right, that should be enough for you. Are you an oath keeper? Are you an oath keeper?
Why is that your right to videotape-
Why? Have you read the Constitution, sir? Have you read the Constitution, officer? Have you read-
Why is that your right to walk around to all these personal vehicles?
Everything hits his forehead and bounces back.
And take down their license plates with your personal camera.
Go read the Constitution, the First Amendment, you'll know why.
Why suggest that you go read it?
Okay.
Okay?
Because you're a public servant, you work for me, that's why.
Not in this particular case.
I pay for that fucking car, I pay for everything over here, man. Let's see if this gentleman will act on. Are you a sergeant?
That's fine.
How you doing, sergeant? Can I get your name and badge number, sir? Can I get your name and badge number?
John Smothers.
John Smothers. Same here, brother. I don't know, I was just taking pictures. I was in the front, I went into the- Uh, where there's a council meeting going on. I just took some pictures, I came out here. I'm in public, you know, exercising my right. I seen these gentlemen leaving this parking lot and then they pull up here and start tripping on me for, you know, just simply exercising my right, taking pictures of officials during the course of their duty.
I understand that you're not supposed to take many photos or anything like that beyond those gates.
Beyond those gates.
Because, and it really makes kinda unnervous a little bit when people are taking photos of us in our personal vehicles. Believe it or not, we're targeted a lot by different people.
Okay.
And we really don't like it. And it's not, you know what I mean? You wouldn't like us go into your house and mess with the cars.
Well, again, like I explained to these gentlemen, sir, this is not your house. This is paid by taxpayers' money. They have every right to know how their money is being spent. And that's the whole point. And as long as I can see it from public, I can take a picture of it, okay? Because you cannot trespass the eyes. That's the law, sir. I know the law. I know 148. G, sir. Do you know that penal code 148. G?
Okay.
Listen to me. Listen to me.
Okay?
I don't know what you're trying to do. I don't know if you're trying to antagonize us into something.
Not at all, sir.
You can videotape me all day long, I don't care, as long as you get my good side.
You should. I mean, there shouldn't be two sides either. It should be only one good side, sir. That's something that a couple of officers have used before. I really don't like it. Like, you guys have two faces or something, you know? Good side and bad side.
Are you okay?
I'm okay, are you?
I am awesome.
Okay, so, alright, let's not go there, alright.
So, what is it that you would like to do?
Uh, nothing. I just wanna be left alone as I exercise my right. We still live in America. That's about it.
As long as you don't-
Trespass.
Get too close to that gate over there, you'll be fine.
I don't know what you mean by getting close to it.
Okay, that gate right there is to the police department, okay?
Okay.
And it has our personal vehicles in there. And I would appreciate if you don't videotape us as we drive out of our parking lot in our personal vehicles.
I-
Cause that is not your- that is not your action. Those are our personal vehicles.
There is no expectancy of privacy in public, you know that, right?
I understand.
Okay, so... That just demolished that logic right there.
I'm asking you to not go there.
You're asking me. I'm gonna-
That's all I'm asking.
I'm gonna respectfully refuse, sir.
As a human being-
Okay.
To not videotape our-
Respectfully.
Pictures of our personal vehicles, because we do have a little heightened expectation that somebody could target us for other things.
Right.
You understand that, right?
You guys shouldn't be that paranoid.
Do you understand that? I'm asking you. Are you okay?
I'm okay, sir. I don't know why you keep asking me. No, look at him, he's putting his gloves on, like, how you doing? Alright, alright, how you doing, man?
He's got skin condition, anyway.
I'm scaring others.
Yeah, you got other employees too that are also-
Why would you guys be scared of a camera?
You have to understand in the daytime that we live in, in this society-
This day and age?
This day and age.
Where people are dying for no reason, in the hands of public officials, like police officers?
The issue is that you're in town, but we've got-
It's a fact, sir.
We have staff that work also out of city hall-
Right.
That are not afforded the protection that the officers here have.
Right.
Okay, so you are alarming them. You're an individual who is coming around videotaping. I saw you walk in towards the city hall, videotaping.
Correct.
You're more than welcome to do that. It is a public location. I saw you videotaping out in the front. However, when you start videotaping through a fenced area where there is some expectation of privacy, then that is when you are potentially crossing the line.
Alright.
Okay, and so we're respectfully, just like Sergeant Smothers asked you, respectfully asking that if you're done with what you're doing, to kindly move on, because we do have city business that needs to take care of.
Right.
We do have staff that is wishing to leave for the day.
Okay.
And by-
I'm holding him back, or is that what you said? By exercising my First Amendment right. I'm holding people back.
Well, people are scared.
Do you see how you guys trying to infringe upon my First Amendment right?
Nobody's infringing you on anything.
Okay, so I let you speak now. Am I allowed to speak? I'm gonna say the same thing I told these gentlemen right here.
That wants to leave. Now, this is city property, okay? This park area, this is city property.
Who pays for this?
So, we can impose you to go ahead and leave at this point.
You cannot trespass me from public area, correct?
This is a public property, however, you're causing a disturbance or you're-
Uh, I'm causing disturbance. You're live, by the way.
What you need to do, sir, is we- the sergeant has respectfully asked you to go ahead and move on, so that we can get, carry on about our business. I'd like to get the staff that's living in city hall-
Okay.
To be able to go home for the evening.
Alright.
Okay, and that way I get my officers to get back to work and you can carry about your day, okay?
And you are-
And you're more than welcome to go ahead and do whatever you need to do and-
I let you speak now, can I respond to what you just said?
Sure, go ahead. We're tying up a lot of resources right now.
Well, I'm not, you guys are. Uh, let me tell you something. We're the country of the laws, right? This country has laws. We're built on laws, correct? Okay. So, if you can explain to me what law am I breaking right now, I'll be more than happy to step off this property.
Like we explained to you, when you start, when you start going over and start videotaping into a fenced in area where there is an expectation of privacy, that, at that point, at that point, sir, you're, you can be crossing the line.
So, you understand?
The officers have asked you respectfully not to videotape these individuals coming or going in their privately owned vehicles, sir. You have to understand the climate that we live in. We have homes-
Just because of the climate, first of all. Let me tell you, let me ask you a question. When was the last time Atwater dealt with terrorism?
Okay.
Can you explain that?
Potentially, we could be dealing with it right now, sir.
Uh, so you're calling me a terrorist, sir? What's your badge number?
I don't have a badge number. I'll give you my- like I said, I explained to you, I can give you my car.
So, you're telling me that I can be-
So, when we, when we look at, when we look at, and I'm telling you this, okay?
You can't trespass my eyes, sir. That's the law.
Are you done? Did you get what you need? What is it you were looking for?
I just started. I started here. I was gonna go shoot around the building. I was live and there's like about 400 people watching you right now, making a fool out of your department and your city. If I want to, I will do that whenever I'm willing to. I was just gonna ask you a question. If I refuse to leave, what would happen?
We're asking you to leave.
So, you're asking me. So, I can, I can very respectfully deny your-
You can.
Request, correct?
And I'm asking you, just, just as, as we've been very courteous with you,
Right.
We're asking for the same courtesy to come back.
Okay.
Again, we do have staff that would like to leave.
Right.
Alright, and because we don't know who you are, and frankly, I really don't care, okay? We would like to go ahead and allow my staff to go ahead and leave. We gotta go ahead and clear up the rest of the officers, they can do their thing.
Well, if I'm, if you guys not gonna threaten me with arrest or anything, I'm gonna respectfully reject that, okay? Because it's my First Amendment right to stand in public, take pictures, and you cannot trespass my eyes. That's the law. As long as I can see it from public-
Did you see the sign that was-
Yes, it says no vehicles, correct? Okay, so I'm not a vehicle, I'm a person.
Okay, alright.
There is no trespass law. If you guys say I'm gonna be arrested under distress, I would more than happy to leave and then I'll have my lawyer deal with you. Is that what you're saying?
Did we say that, sir?
No, no.
None of us said that, sir.
No, okay, so I'm not gonna be arrested if I don't leave, right? Just wanna make that clear. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your name is Armando... Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir. I just want, listen, this is America, okay? This is the whole point I'm trying to make, okay? I'm an auditor. I do audits on First Amendment of the Constitution. And when you guys pull something like this-
Let me ask you this.
Look at all these vehicles, guys. There are 500, almost 500 people watching you make a fool out of your department.
Let me ask you this, sir. Let me ask you this. Uh, which group are you with?
For free press. Free press.
Free press?
First Amendment, what is the First Amendment of the Constitution accept?
I'm asking you what group that you're, or what group or entity you're doing.
It's called the First Amendment of, it's called, uh, First Amendment auditors. You go, you go on YouTube and check it out, you'll see. You're actually live. If you go put Central Cali News Network-
I say hello to my mom, but she passed away several years ago.
Uh, I'm sorry about that, sir.
Well, and maybe the public would like to take resources off of the streets that are protecting-
Right. I would like his name and badge number, cause I wanna forehand that phone, okay? I'm gonna do an open request on his phone. You think you can get away with shit, don't you? See, this is the type of crap that I don't like, man. I'm right here, man. I'm gonna be here for a while. Oh, they're gonna go around and look for my car? You think I drove here? Are you guys gonna go around and, what, chase me around? I got a problem with tyrants, sir. I got a problem with tyrants. I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot.
You wasting enough time on me wasting our time.
Yeah, you guys have no- that's the whole point. What's your name and badge number? I never got your name and badge number. You gave it to me?
Yeah, I told you.
I never got your badge number, sir. Smothers? Who did you smother? Got that name. No, man, I'm just kidding. Alright, man, I'm not trying to be a dick, bro, but... Oh, I am? Okay, well, whatever, whatever.
Please do not walk up on the back of my officers while they're back to-
Whoa, whoa.
I'm asking you not to. That is not cool.
So, you're blocking me from walking around freely, or what?
You know what?
I know the Constitution. I know the law really good. I won't let-
I'm very proud of you.
Yeah. You're not gonna pray. Alright. You guys pray on people's ignorance of the law, man.
Right on, man.
What's your name and badge number?
My badge number 723. That's all you need to know. You don't even know my name.
Oh, really?
My name is attached to that badge number. You can find out.
Okay, is that your ID number or badge number?
It's my ID number.
Okay, alright, that's all you have to say. And is the body camera on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm gonna be foreha- I'm gonna forehand that, okay?
Right on.
Oh, yeah. Trust me, brother. Wow, paranoid public employees. Look at this, guys. Yeah, thank you, Casey.
Just be proud of yourself.
Oh, I'm so proud. Dude, you have no idea, man. I am so proud. What game is that to you? Huh? Standing up for my right is a game to you? That's the fucking disconnect that we have. Why not? It's my First Amendment right. I can say, to you? I don't care. That's your problem. When things, when things become offensive, you start going for your gun. That's the fucking problem. I'm not, I'm saying, I have the camera. If I hadn't had camera, what would have happened, sir? What would have happened if I wasn't live right now? Huh? With all you guys pulling up right here like gangsters? Man, you're dismissed. You're a public servant, man.
I'm sorry?
You're a public servant, remember that. You're dismissed. You're dismissed. He's looking to get me for something, man. He keep asking me, "Are you okay? Are you okay?"
Now you're trying to antagonize me into a violent response. That is a crime.
Excuse me? Is that a threat? You said that live, remember that shit? I'm gonna take a couple steps back. This guy's nuts. Oh, god. Oh, God. They had to have the city officials come on, shit, guys. So all their employees are hiding in the back. They don't wanna leave because there's someone with a camera. Standing in the middle of the park, by the way, guys, look. I'm in the park. There's like public benches over there. Are you guys getting calls? Are you getting some calls? Are you getting some calls?
Yeah, you're tying up nine one one.
Oh, I'm, I'm tying up nine one one call. How, how did I, did I make a phone call? Did I make a phone call? How am I tying up anything? It's the citizens who are sick of people like you. That's what's happening. Don't shish me, man. Don't fucking shish me, bro. I am fucking proud. Piece of shit. I hope you're proud. Thank you, guys. Hey, guys, please don't call the nine one one emergency call, cause, um.
I'm sorry, you gotta speak up. I can't.
I'm not talking to you, man. Not everything's about you, buddy. Yeah, call the non-emergency, guys, and voice your concerns. Please don't call Florida. Yeah, thank you, guys. Yeah, so this guy, he's the supervisor and he just told him to. He gave him the little finger. I don't know what that means. He's like, it means go around or something like that. You wanna sing and dance? Go for it. Come on, Mikey, dance.
I had a band when I was in high school.
Oh. I thought you were gonna entertain me real quick. You're not gonna dance?
No, not right now.
Oh, I thought you were gonna sing and dance.
I was gonna.
Oh, God. I can see this guy, you know, stripping and shit out of uniform, you know, working with a strip club, you know? Oh, guys. I keep going back and this guy keeps coming to me, you know? Don't worry about me, bro. My safety is none of your concern, man. You need to kick rocks. No, it's not. That's what the Supreme Court have ruled, okay? You need to go, go learn the law, man, okay? I can protect myself. O- obviously you don't know the law. You're here harassing me right now. You don't have anything better to do? Is this what you get paid for? To stand around and bullshit with me?
When you cause me to be up.
How am I causing you to be out here? I have every right to be out here. Fucking cowards, man. No, I know, man, I know. Cause these guys keep getting close. This guy, look, he was over there by that car. Now, look at, look at where he's at. He keeps coming. What's that? What's that? He keeps coming. What's that? Don't worry. Get in your car and leave, bro. You're dismissed. God, man. Are you looking to get me for something or what? They're gonna have the guys paranoid as shit. Nah, I'm gonna back up. Hey, don't worry what I'll do. Oh, I hope not. See you later. Fuck off, man. Wow, man, how long was, wow, thirty minutes, guys. Right when I got on, uh, livestream. They just stormed me. They stormed me, guys. Like, watching. He's waving at me. It's called the First Amendment, freedom of speech. And that's called a bird. Yes, it is. Alright, guys, I gotta back up a little bit. These guys cannot get me legally. They will some other way. I got. I got all their badge names, numbers, and all. I'll put them up later, guys. I'll make a little video out of this. I got all their names, all their badge numbers, and they were recording me, taking my picture, all of that. We're gonna do it for you, so. We'll be coming back here for sure, guys. Hey, thanks for being with me, guys. I swear, I felt like I, I couldn't read your comments, guys, sorry, because I was just keeping an eye on everything that was going on. But, yeah, man, there you guys have it. Hey, thanks for calling them too, guys. Hey, thank you so much, guys. You know, I appreciate it. Hey, once they start getting the calls, it kinda got real for them. They're driving in the park in the grass, you know, however the hell they want. Alright, this was my first time being here, guys. So I'll be back here again. They're gonna try to patrol the back. Alright, let's go see the city council, guys, and then. Uh, I'm gonna have to cut. I'm gonna have to go around, walk around a little bit and then cut. I know they're gonna try to follow me and stuff, so. Hey, that's the routine. That's what we do. You know, every time we go out, we gotta go in a couple of circles before we leave. Alright, guys, so there was a city council going on here. I was actually here first. Everybody was cool with me, you know? But all of a sudden, I guess everybody started tripping. Alright, here's the PD, guys. Alright, guys, uh, because I don't belong to this city, I cannot enter there and I don't wanna start something, so. It is going on right now. I'm sorry? No, I'm just independent journalist.
Oh, independent.
Yes, sir. You have a good day. I was a chaplain, which is like, um, volunteers. Alright, guys. Uh, let's get some complaint forms on. While we're here. It's like nobody's here. See if we can get ahold of somebody. What does it say? Record is closed. Alright, I'll come back later. Yeah, I need to get the hell out of here, guys. This guy's gonna be planning stuff. Alright, guys, just bear with me for like five more minutes and then. Oh, I was gonna say the door's not opening. Oh, crap. I thought they got me. No, I'm kidding. Alright, guys, there it is. The city of Outwater. And we don't have a phone number here. But, um, I'll get their number and everything. I'll make a video of what happened, guys. Hey, thanks for being with me. Appreciate you, guys. Thanks to all the moderators. I hope you guys were keeping an eye. I couldn't see what was going on. With all these, uh, gunmen surrounding me. Alright. Alright, it's time for me to get the hell up out of here, guys. Again, thanks for being with me. Um, I gotta take some detours before I go anywhere. Alright, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And Central Cali News Network, I'm out.